Twenty twenty. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilci?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Swift?
Here.
Terrific, all present. Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
Ready, set, go. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have, Sherry or Lucas, do we have anyone wishing to speak during public communications tonight? Okay, we did, we did receive some email from Bill Miley. And I have sent a reply to him explaining that the commission does not take public video or, or audio for a discussion item, but it will if there's a public hearing. And if the commission decides to do something with item two tonight, make any recommendation to the council. The formal recommendation would only take place after a public hearing during which he would have a chance to speak.
Yep, and I actually, I actually sent him a very similar email as well. I didn't realize you had as well, so that's good.
Yeah, good. Okay, next on the, the agenda is our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission two weeks ago, November fourth. Any commissioners have any recommended adds or deletes or changes? Seeing none, I'd welcome a move, motion to approve. Commissioner Nolan?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Ojai Planning Commission meeting minutes from November fourth, twenty twenty.
We have a second?
A second.
Very good. Any discussion? Sherry, your roll call, please.
Quilci?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Our next is the discussion item. Part of Title X cleanup, but this is really for our two newest commissioners. From my point of view, we're going to do something interesting tonight. We're, we're going to look at potential changes to Title X that are substantive. And I'd really like to have Lucas get us started on this thing.
Yeah, so, good evening, commissioners. Remember how we talked about the, we kept using the phrase deeper dive? Welcome to the deeper dive. This is a term sheet that highlights some, some frustrations that I've been, been feeling over the last year, because I've been here for a little over a year now. Regarding how design review permits have, are currently addressed in the code. As it relates to those items going to planning commission or considered for planning commission. And then when is it, when are those items then drawn down to and addressed at the director level and don't necessarily require that, that next level of review? I have a PowerPoint presentation I'd like to go through. It kind of covers the, the term sheet that we're looking at here and it kind of helps to frame the discussion as well. I'd like to go through that and then start with some Q and A and, and start diving into some of this discussion because I think there's a lot to, to unpack with this. And this was something that, that, like I said before, has been ongoing for, for me for a while, but and I know this, you know, members of this commission have spoken about the, the concerns regarding this as well. So it felt like this was the opportune time to kind of start that conversation. And with something like this, it's completely within the realm of norm, of a normalcy to, to have a term sheet to outline those parameters and to talk it through first, rather than coming in with a bunch of red line code changes like we've done with the errata. The difference with the errata is those are, those aren't substantive, those are pretty surface. So anyway, let me share my screen here. Everybody see that?
Yep.
All right. So as an overview to what we're looking at and, and discussing tonight regarding the term sheet, we're looking at Title X, Chapter Two, Article Twenty, and that is the design review permits. It includes components that are within, you know, they include applicability, seminal requirements, findings for design review permits, and then conditions for planning commission review and determination and directors review and determination. Now, within that, that same thread of the director's review and determination is the, is the director's exemption, which is Section Ten to two thousand and three B. And that's really where the crux of, of some of the, the the inconsistencies have, have started to, to feed into and we're looking for some consistency from that, some clarity from that as well. The DRP intermixes also designer view and use determinations at both PC and director level, PC being planning commission. And there's no real clear examples or parameters provided regarding planning commission review versus or identifying the differences between the two different pots where you have planning commission review and then you would have a director commission, director review and determination. And really kind of for an overview, twenty thousand foot level, this is really the term sheet here tonight, the discussion tonight is meant to frame an initial discussion and overview to clarify the design review permit through the creation of, and it's something that I'll, I'll show here in a couple of slides, and that's the site plan permit. So create and pull out some of that use determination or use identification, land use component and, and have it feed into a separate site plan permit. So breaking this into two components, one being planning, planning review and determination, and then in the next slide you'll see a, the director's review and determination. Here are what I would call all of the existing. I would say the framework of, of what the planning commission has purview over and reviews. The ones that I have highlighted here as new, those are being identified as new because they aren't currently within the, the development standards that were, or the, the parameters or the applicability components that are identified within the design review permit article. So these are already identified within the designer review permit. The, the key here is the lack of, and I'm going to the next slide here, is the lack of identification for director review and determination. So these are really kind of the first boilerplate discussion pieces for, for review and determination. And a lot of this is taken from, directly from the code, pulled from the code to a certain degree. Some of it is a little bit of an interpretation and you know, from, from experience that I've seen, these, these tend to be the types of projects that, that would warrant direct review and determination. But like I said before, tonight where it's up for discussion, for review, and then Q and A as well. And then lastly is the, is the creation of a site plan review. And the reason for that creation is it's designed really to separate the use out of the designer review permit process. There's currently an intermixing or a molding of designer review parameters and then land use. And really, when you're looking at the two molded together, there's a lot of conflict and friction that takes place there. And, and I think that even is, is at the crux of like findings in terms of how you address justification for design review versus justification for, for land use. Both of those have fairly, should have fairly different and distinct findings and justification for that specific application or project. And what it's looking to do is add new permit process for the use determination. And then design review permit is still in place regarding planning commission review findings are refocused on, on the design versus findings have potentially having a little bit of an intermix of use component to that, so. In addition, the site plan permit is required for new or modified land use within the C one, the VP, the VMU, or other non-residential zones. The CUP requirements would still be in effect if those requirements are provided within the use charge within Title X. And then findings, I said, I guess, said before are focused on land use. And then I don't want to, and understand that, that I'm mentioning this tonight, but I don't want to get into the appeal process. Where I'm just simply mentioning that the appeal to city council and planning commission, that would still be in effect. There's no, there's no identification for any changes to that at this point. I think first we need to address, that this needs to be addressed first before we start looking at, at that process. So with that, that concludes the, the presentation that I have. In the, so tonight there is an agenda report, there's the term sheet for review, I think it's about four pages of, of really good information to, to kind of kick off that discussion. And then there's also I have in here what's already in the code, which is the design review permit standards and guidelines. So those are already, that's currently what's codified. This term sheet is, is looking at a bit of a, a change to that as well, a rework, a retool, if you will. And really with this, really what this gets down to is there's been a lot of frustration, a lot of time that's been spent on my end regarding the, the identification and the proper channel and process of identifying when a specific project that comes in, whether that project rises to the level of planning commission review or can be handled at staff level, given its minor nature. A lot of research, I've, I've been spending a, a lot, a lot of time, a lot of research to come up with solutions or, or a process, given that in a lot of cases I don't have the background or the history of other projects that had preceded it. It's been kind of all over the board. So with that, I'm, I'm open for, for a comment and question and, and we can start the, the discussion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nolan.
Well, first of all, I'm wondering, should we, I know in the past for a lot of these documents, we've kind of gone page by page. I don't know if that's something we may want to do tonight. And or if that's more efficient. Or, you know, each one of us could go through our entire list of questions or discussion items. I don't know if we want to come to consensus as to how we move forward or-
Article, Article twenty is fairly lengthy. I'm not sure that we're going to have comments on all of it. But I don't see any, any harm in bouncing from place to place as we go from commissioner to commissioner-
Okay.
Talking about areas of interest. So why don't you kick it off?
I will kick it off. So also about-
Hold up, hold up just a moment, Kathy. Yes, Randy?
I just would like to, to just catch up. I'm sorry for being late, you guys. I, I missed last, the last planning and I, for some reason I'm sitting here finishing dinner and I'm going, oh crap, I got a meeting, so. What was Lucas explaining? If I could just touch on that real quick.
Sure. The, a- as you know, if the city council wants the planning commission or another board or commission to take up a topic, it typically is in the form of a request for a term sheet. That is sort of an outline of the concepts that might brought, might be brought forward in an amendment to the code or an ordinance that does a text amendment to the code. In this case, Lucas, Lucas has brought forward the, the problem that he and the staff have right now. Not of understanding where the bright line is between ministerial and discretionary items to be handled when a, when a permit request comes in. But rather how far into the discretionary it's appropriate for the staff and for Lucas to say, that seems minor to us, we'll go ahead and give a DE or just approve a minor variance. And so what we're planning on doing tonight is starting with the term sheet that he wrote up, which is attachment A, four pages of ideas of things that might be done with Title X, Chapter Two, Article Twenty, design review permits. And then the rest of the packet is, is a complete lift of Article Twenty out of the municipal code, the current copy.
Right. So Lucas says, Lucas, have you discussed this with James?
Yes. Yeah, so this is, this is a, a piece taken out of the Title X cleanup that was discussed by, by council, I want to say in two thousand and eighteen. Since then, this planning commission, I mean, I've only been a part of it for half of, of what's been going up up to this point, has been taking a look at a lot of the errata as a, as a first step in this. And we're getting close to the end of the errata and saw an opportunity, I saw an opportunity to do a slightly deeper dive into the design review permit parameters that we're looking at here tonight. So that's, that's kind of where this whole discussion has gotten kicked off.
Okay, I was just hoping that we hadn't gotten to someone questioning your authority to have the ability to do director exemptions. Because that's just not a, that's not something that, that, that I'm aware of as a concern or a problem. And it's not something that I'm interested in discussing. So I'm hoping that that's not what, where this is taking us or that, that's what this discussion is about.
You, wait, you mean in terms of the director's exemption process?
Yes.
So the director's exemption process is still in play. It's just a matter of identifying those different projects that fall into the, to the lap of the director for review and consideration and-
Well, that's what I'm trying to say here. Does the planning commission have a problem with your ability to do that?
Not here.
We haven't.
I think we're talking more about, about Lucas is looking for some guidance from the commission as to where to draw the line between major and minor changes to projects or where to draw the line between minor discretionary and really needs to go to the planning commission.
If, if I may jump in here, so council member, Andy, the purpose of kind of what we, the term sheet is really to formalize a process because prior to, you know, in the past, the process for land use permits has been somewhat opaque. And, and the, speaking from a legal perspective, it's off, it's easiest to defend a process that is consistent, consistent, fair and, and yeah, it's consistent and fair, exactly, and clear and transparent. And so one of the things is that, you know, the, the purpose would be a cleanup so applicants know as they, as they apply for their project that, you know, what's going to, for example, a director's exemption or what, 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 what's going to planning commission rather than sort of kind of the ambiguous procedure that our code currently talks about. And so at, the code as written right now gives a lot of discretion to staff and deciding what goes to commission, what doesn't. And this, to a certain extent, what this will do will formalize that process. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's a work in progress, but you know, the part of it is also the, making sure the commission has a chance to weigh in on things, I guess is what will, will, and then the other process, I think, would be the other part of, part of it would be that the applicants, you know, are treated fairly as well. So, you know, that, that's, it's sort of a two halves to it, is I think what this was a suggestion from staff.
Okay, like you said, I was just trying to get some background. I get land use is opaque just in its nature. And that's why we have a planning commission to come in to actually have the discussion about who, what, why, and how and, and on your land. So I, I, I get that. I just, my concern is that and I, and I maybe I'm jumping in too soon and I'll back up and listen more. But I'm not inclined to place any additional burden on our planning director and, and, and take away his or his staff's authority to make the appropriate decisions that they feel are necessary in land use decisions. Now, there is a process that's already in place. If the director does a director's exemption and the planning commission isn't a hundred percent behind it, two of you can appeal it, that the council member can appeal it. So that's why I'm going to take a step back and listen to this discussion. But I just want to voice my opinion real clear upfront about director's exemptions. We had this discussion a long time ago and we had a major problem with, I think it was eleven oh five, if I'm correct on signal. And I thought that we pretty much vetted this and actually clarified the DEs and the use of them by the planning directors, but I'll sit back and listen. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that, that at least my, my goal here is to help the staff understand what the planning commission thinks might, might comprise a minor variance or a minor project to help, to help with trying to decide whether to send something to the planning commission or go ahead and deal with it at the staff level. And I think staff is just looking, looking for some opinions there to make it a little quicker to make their decisions on whether or not to send something to the planning commission automatically or grant a DE. I grant you that the, the DE process and the process for appealing or if you will reconsidering a DE is well in hand and we have done that a couple of times now. Or at least tried a couple of times and done it at least once. And I think we would all agree that that process works. I think staff is looking for some guidance to, to shorten the decision time in, in do we send something automatically to the planning commission? Or do we deal with it at the staff level?
Well, just one other comment, the, the, there's a real, there's been a real Nikhil addressed it also, that the, as a part of the process, there is there, there is a, a confusing overlap of treating design review versus uses. And, and, and using the design review as a tool to review uses, and that's really very awkward to say the least. And so, you know, part of what I, I took away from this tonight or the, the staff report is that Lucas is proposing well, allowing the opportunity to talk about a way to kind of, to have a more straightforward path to, when we're talking about design review and how, how to clarify that process and then also to have a better vehicle to address the review of uses. And whether it would be a minor use permit or whether it's a CUP or whether it's staff level or planning commission, but there really should be a distinction between simply building changes and, and use changes. I mean, most other communities deal with those with different kinds of permits. They don't mix them up. And so that's part of what we would be talking about. But I think just talking about trying to and some of the language in the, in the code is confusing, it's not clear. And it doesn't contain examples. So I just think that there might be opportunity to just provide clarity for everybody. It would help the process.
And I guess maybe it, it might help Lucas at this point. I mean, what, speaking from a legal perspective, perhaps to explain how like a clean set of divisions between, say, planning commission permits, both land use and design and director appropriate projects will, you know, basically be a better allocation of staff time perhaps and also create a more defensible and less arbitrary process for applicants. So. Lucas, I mean, if you wanted to, yeah.
Oh, I, I know that over the years you've been following what the planning commission has been doing, Randy. And one of the things that we did over a year or so ago, I guess, was to go through the land use tables that are in Title X, Chapter Two, right now. And, and we made at least preliminary suggestions, we haven't sent them to the council yet of additions and changes and even some deletions to those land use tables. And it's, it's my understanding right now that when a, when an application comes in for a project that the primary land use decision making that goes on is at the staff level and it is in two parts. One is reviewing the land use tables, that's tables two, 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 four, two, six, I think in, in Title X. And the other is then the director's allowable and I think appropriate level of discretion as to what constitutes a similar use to something that's in the land use tables but not explicitly listed. Then when we get to a DRP, then we're talking mostly about exterior appearance of a project, not what's going on in the project as a whole or the land use, if you will. And a good example would be at two fourteen West Aliso, which Kathy Nolan and I at least were present for a while back. And there was a contention that that building was going to be a community center. It wasn't clear from the code what a community center was, but certainly those words were listed in the land use tables as appropriate for that PL zone. And it was PL because that used to be the nunnery for the Saint Thomas Aquinas Church.
I, I remember that discussion.
Yeah. And so I think if, if we could, if we could perhaps more formalize the consideration of land use in a project. If, if the commission decides that something beyond the zoning clearance, I guess basically it is that the staff does now to initiate looking at a project. Then that would be a good thing. It would provide clarity not only for the applicants, but it would make it, make it easier for the staff to say, yes, this is okay, this is, this has to be changed, whatever.
Okay.
And we can talk about the design as well and, and, you know, try to try to keep both the design and the land use determinations within the purview of the commission and the staff. And you, you have been around long enough, and I think Commissioner Nolan as well, to know that there used to be an architectural review board in the city and it was merged some years ago with the planning commission. But it seems like in design review, most of what we do is a sort of architectural review board exercise rather than a consideration of proposed land use. And if it's appropriate to leave that all to the staff and that's what we decide, that's fine. Maybe some guidance is in order. If we need to do something more formal, then that would be the something that the commission would decide. Then that would be the something that the commission would decide to recommend to the city council as a text amendment.
Thank you. That's a good explanation. All right.
So Commissioner Nolan, you had some ideas you wanted to talk about. Start us off and we'll kind of round robin it and.
Well, first of all, I want to thank staff um for the term sheet. And I do think that at this point, I know we're gonna have a further discussion, but separating the land use from the design review. Is a smart and efficient um idea. And then of course, I know sometimes we we probably may get a project that comes forth with land use and design review depending on what's going on. But I think I could see the um. The time saving, the efficiency, not only for staff, the planning commission, but also for the applicants. So I I see those are the benefits, but I I'm gonna start on page one and it sort of ties in with some of the other areas. And and this is a question um.
Are you in attachment A or B?
Page uh one of uh attachment A, one of four. I go down to the fourth bullet. And it starts describing, you know, what the planning commission commission reviews. And I suppose this may also even tie in for with a director's exemption. I'm wondering. If I go down, you know, it says a CUP, minor variance, planned development, et cetera. And then it has the exceptions. But then also has if there's a change in existing commercial industrial building which will require additional parking, exterior alteration, modifying structure, architectural details. Visual characteristics, including paint color and et cetera. Should landscape be included in that? And I'll I'll let me just ask or say why I think it might or may. Um number one, if um a project is coming in for review for a DRP, the landscape's included. But it's also a big part of the aesthetic and I've noticed there's been a shift in the aesthetics changing. I'm not sure if that aesthetic is completely just described in the des- uh design review guidelines anywhere. But I think they probably should. So that's from the aesthetic standpoint. To me, it's just as important as changing a paint color. But number two, this is another layer. What about for the environmental aspects? Of it changing and how that affects the eco- I mean, it happens to be, you know, a building is pretty much you're gonna do maintenance on it. But this landscape is an ecosystem, it's a living system. And if it starts getting changed, number one, does it affect the um overall aesthetic we're trying to create? And number two, how does that affect the environment or the local ecology? So I'm kind of throwing that out there, maybe um. I feel like it should be added, but I just wanna hear what my fellow commissioners think about that. And then I'll just go through my other quick comments. On page two of four, if you go down to where it has di- director review and determination. Um the third and fourth items have to do with uh new single story. For proposed single story family residential on slopes of fifteen percent or greater. I'm wondering if that should go to planning commission. And the reason I say that is because typically when we've had, well, a fair percent of projects on the slopes. They tend to be a little more complicated because now you're talking about sightlines, you're talking about views, view shed. Et- et cetera. And I'm thinking that maybe that does go to um or at least that's my opinion at this point that.
You're talking about building height depending on where you measure it.
Well, there's building height, but the fact that you're um building on a slope, then you're starting to get into to like major grading potentially. Because of your access to get up there, so you're cha- there's the potential to change a lot on the site and then also the views or aesthetics. Looking up at the site. So that's why I'm thinking in our discussion, maybe we may wanna look at that. It's going to planning commission. I let me just go through this um.
So you're suggesting that construction on a fifteen degree slope or greater. Should be a planning commission review, not a director review.
Right, and that's for single family residential.
What about multifamily residential on a?
Oh yeah, I mean, that would be true, but typically the single family residence unless it's, you know, of a certain height over the twenty four feet. We it doesn't come to us, you know, unless they're. You know, it's a single one existing and they're gonna add a second story. But in this case, I'm saying, I think, or I'd like to put it into the discussion. That a single family residence built on a slope greater than fifty percent would come to the uh planning commission for review.
Lucas, do you have an idea of how much of the city would be included in that? That slope of fifteen percent or greater?
I, you know, I don't off the top of my head, but um that's something I can look into to see if there.
Clearly, the stuff at the top of Daly. Uh that runs up the hill up to Shelf Road, that's that's gonna qualify, I think.
Yeah.
Isolated lot on the south side that qualifies as well.
Yeah, you're probably looking at the northern parts of Ojai.
Right.
And portions of Perma- uh Pessimant Hill as well potentially.
I walk up and down Foothill a lot. And I can tell you, uh I can walk a mile up Foothill. From my home and it averages about six percent grade. Just uh checking distances and altitude changes. So. I and I think of that as a fairly steep part of town. And I've gotten out of the city limits when I hit Fairview Road and that's where it starts to get steeper. So. While I think it it could be a good idea to do this, it also is not going to affect much of the city.
Right.
And maybe just the fact that it doesn't affect much of the city would make it an outlier. Among the population of project applications and we ought to take a look at it.
I do I do have a question. So why did we see the project on daily? I mean, it was a concept review, but was that, did they have some two-story elements? Is that why it?
It was it it was two, it was might have been three stories. It might have been two stories with a basement. But it was definitely more than a fifteen percent slope.
Okay, so so we only saw that project because it had some two-story elements and otherwise we would. That project, is that?
It's also because it was in an ag zone.
Change of use.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Because that that's a that almost would could have been a project if it had been in a in a uh one of the residential zones. Um that could have been a project that would have never made it to planning commission then if it was just a single story.
Yeah, I think.
An example.
Yeah, if you look at the land use tables right now, I'm not sure that a single family residence is a permitted use in the ag zone.
It is.
Employee residences are, but I'm not sure a single family is.
No, I'm pretty sure you can. Oh, you could.
Purpose. This is uh table two, six, I think, right? Yes.
There we go.
Um, single family residence is not listed.
Oh.
As a residential use in the ag zone right now. You can have caretaker and employee quarters, you can have farm worker housing. You can have a guest house. You could have a second residential unit, but not a primary.
Yeah, okay.
Uh that's one of the things we'd like to clarify for certain.
I don't even think, I don't even think we addressed that I.
Wait, was it was a point that came up during the discussion.
Okay.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Was was a single family house even allowed in the ag zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, God, please, please go ahead, Commissioner Nolan.
Okay, good. Um and then let me ask this, is it okay at this point? To uh go in and reference anything in in the design review uh permit article twenty existing at this point?
Sure.
Okay, okay, good. So I I just wanted to kind of support my my idea about adding the landscape. But um section ten dash two point two zero zero one, purpose of article. And there it says um. Well, the Commission by City Laws is charged with the responsibility to um the maintenance of architectural standards, which will contribute to these. And sustain property values and further public welfare. I I feel like the landscape falls into that and should be included. Um and then I wanted to um. I kind of got into, I think on page, attachment B, page two, number five. Where it speaks about visual characteristics, that would again support potentially landscape. But then um.
But it seems to me that every time we have seen a project come in to to build a new home and doesn't happen very often. That there's always a landscape plan as a part of the package.
There is.
Is that because it's required or is that just because all these applicants are volunteering it?
No, if you have um up to certain, if you meet the uh modified water efficient landscape ordinance. Criteria would trigger you how to do the landscape plan, but because it does um. You know, somehow I feel like it's just equally as important as the architecture for the two reasons I mentioned, aesthetics and kind of environmental. Um but then I had a question on attachment B, page six. In regards to public structures and complete streets. And if you go down to C, which is design guidelines, there's two uh references that are listed. Complete Streets Local Policy Workbook and the Complete Streets Best Policy and Implementation Practices. Um the first one. Oh, that was from two thousand and twelve and the second one is two thousand and ten. And my only question is, I I will have to say I did not review those two documents. But I'm wondering if they should be reviewed and potentially there may be something to replace it or they may have an update. Just because so much uh more uh development in different areas has taken place in different agencies. That there may be a more updated document.
Also, the Complete Streets Master Plan that the commission did recommend to.
Right.
The city council did approve.
Right, so I was gonna mention.
At least that should be referenced in here.
Exactly. Uh these probably go into more general detail, but ours is definitely um specific. For the city of Ojai. And um and of course could be elaborated on, which we well knew when it was adopted, but it is definitely um. It was approved by the city council, so it should be in there. I think, let me just see if there was anything else. I think that was it for the moment.
Okay, who's next?
Okay, I'll go next. Um.
All right.
Uh I think I I agree with Kathy on all of her points. Um very, very well said. Yeah, I I mean, I just um. I I some of what I looked at were questions about um language in the code. And for example, the planning commission. Oh, under applicability, so um.
That's two double oh three, I think.
Yes, page one of ten, attachment B. So, you know, it talks about the. Commission reviews all applications for building permits. And to me, that just, that doesn't really make sense because the process is that. Any application goes through the community development pla- the planning department first. And it's reviewed for requirements with planning, the land use uh regulations. And then it is going, it goes into the building department. And it it there's an application for the building permit and that that's that's a a separate process. And so it seems to me that what we're talking about here is um the. The planning process of the city, not the building permit process. And um because uh and actually, building permits are totally ministerial, not discretionary, so. Uh there's just some language cleanup that I've kind of looked at. The other, the other example um. Is that, I don't know what the heck. What is this home split thing i- in here and what like? So, I mean, has that ever happened? Why? I I've never seen a reference to a home split.
I think that's the creation of.
Right.
An attached ADU from a primary structure.
Well, it's a subdivision of an existing house and there's certain land, there are footage requirements apparently, because I did look at that a little bit, but the. But the ADU is something totally different. It's got its own, it's got its own separate requirements. It doesn't really come under anything defined as a home split, I don't think. I could be wrong, but. Nikhil wants to weigh in on that. Anyway, it just seems like a very old fashioned uh reference that. I'm not sure that has any meaning at all and um whether that would. Would that go to the planning commission or would that just go to staff? I'm not even sure about that, but. So it's um. The other, so there's just some language things that I just wondered. And we might call a non-single family, I mean, that means multifamily, correct? Multifamily, okay.
I think the phrase multifamily is used in a lot of places.
Okay.
Might be better.
Okay. Um I'm really, I'm very appreciative of the effort to kind of um. Think of the process as um. A dual track for separate process for view, review of building changes. And a process for use changes. And uh they they might come together so that we would be reviewing a project for both a use change. And a design review change or vice versa could go to staff, just depending on the level of the change. And uh I agreed with Kathy on, well, I I already said that. Um the I just want, I'm wondering, for example, with the director review about exterior modifications. To me, that is so broad. In ex- exterior modifications in existing single family zones and multifamily zones. I'm back on attachment A, page two. Under director review. I I don't know, to me, that's really, really broad and I'm looking for maybe ways to have um. Better specificity to some of that.
Uh well, one thing, one thing is the the uh exterior modifications, including painting. Uh uh the rules are different for landmarked properties than there are than they are for anything else in the city.
Right.
Um and probably some mention of that would be good.
We did touch on, there's a confusion of who is reviewing. What, when there is a landmark property and we're not talking, I mean, I don't think we're getting that into that tonight, but. Uh it did seem like there would be. It would be a good idea to provide better clarity to that process as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can take a look at that. The the thing from a from a clarification standpoint in terms of whether or not. A historic landmark is reviewed by the planning commission. Really stems from, like for instance, for a single family, is if it's a two-story. I mean, and that was kind of where that conversation had started. If it's a single story, the way in which this code reads currently. Does not go to planning commission, period. Um and to some degree, that actually is logical. You have the Historic Preservation Commission um being charged with looking at those specific projects in a very intimate fashion. And they're looking at it from a from a detailed, very highly detailed uh format, I would say. So going through that for the first time with with the commission, I felt pretty comfortable with how that process was handled.
Oh, okay, so I would, I was thinking that there was confusion with the two-story, if there was a two-story.
If there's a. We would, we would, we would have that review, but it would first go to Historic Preservation Commission. Have them provide that um that. but it would first go to Historic Preservation Commission, have them provide that um, that determination. And then, planning commission would weigh in and provide their determination from a DRP standpoint.
Yeah, that's the existing process already outlined in the code, so they, they do have that level of review, so.
Uh, Lucas, maybe, Lucas, maybe you could just give us a brief overview of how this is done. Because clearly, I mean, the clear, the, the plain language right now that says the planning commission reviews all building permits with the following exceptions. Um. It's, it's a little hard to understand.
Yeah.
But uh, my thought was your zoning clearance process did most of the land use stuff. And then, if there were other conditions like a second story, that it definitely came to the planning commission. But give us an idea of how you go through that right now, just high level.
Yeah, absolutely. The uh, it's high level slash, I might dip into some details, and then I'll jump back up to the high level. Anytime that, that either myself or I have staff working on um, a, an inquiry. We start from the beginning of, of the land use. What, what's the zoning for that specific piece of, of property? If it requires um, depending on what they're proposing to do, we evaluate whether there's a CUP requirement from a use standpoint. And then depending on what they're proposing to do from an exterior standpoint in terms of the building, if you ground up construction, in terms of new construction. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward if it's, if it's, for instance, if it's commercial. It gets a little bit tricky when you start looking at existing uses that are, are um, changing. Use, intensifying use, if you, if you want to use that, that phrase or term. Um, that creates a little bit of confusion, uh, at least on, on seating design, certainly on my end. Um, let me give you an example, and these are projects that we've already had come through this commission. Um, Ojai Valley Pharmacy, when that came forward, uh, I looked at it, reviewed it. Researched it, and it looked like a conditional use permit, based on the information that was provided to me in the very beginning. And that's what I explained to the applicant. That was a lot of research, a lot of information gathering. Um, and working with staff to make that determination. Once they submitted the application, I looked at it closer, and I, I realized that, in fact, the information that I was looking at was old. It was information that previous directors had used, and it wasn't, it wasn't updated information, it wasn't current information. So, it required me to do a deeper dive into, into that information, which created additional time on, on our end, on my end. To, to understand and, and kind of unravel the entire process. And once I, I unraveled that process, I realized that, no, it, it's actually not a conditional use permit. There is a, a simpler process that revolves around a direct, or a design review permit. Um, at the director level, given the simplicity of what was being proposed. Um, and that was, I mean, we're talking, it was, it was a couple months of review. Clarification and discussions with the applicant to get them on the same page. And that's the, that's the confusion that, and the frustration that I've been feeling, and I'm, I'm looking for um, a, a process that provides that a little bit more clarity, um, and can, I would say even consistency. When you have items like this that are highlighted here and marked down, um, in terms of, of. In terms of that land use component versus design review, and then highlighting those specific types of, of scenarios. That we've got a lot, kind of um, highlighted here in the term sheet. It begins to set that, that trend in terms of, well, this clearly goes here. And it, and it, it creates a, I would say, in a more efficient process, in terms of, of how um, this review gets from A to Z, or from the beginning to the end.
Okay.
Well, I, 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 just to follow up on that, I mean, I, I would definitely agree that somewhere intensification of use should be included in here. Um, whether it's something that uh, goes to the, that should be reviewed under the planning commission or the staff. You know, that's up for discussion, and I'm uh, you know, I would lean in the way, direction of um. I lean more toward, putting, giving it to planning commission review on a number of these aspects. But uh, be that it is at May, I just think for purposes of discussion, that, I don't think the, the reference to intensification of use is anywhere in the code, and I think, I, I totally agree with that, Lucas, and I think it should, yeah, it's something that. Um, it should be a trigger. It should be a trigger for review, so.
Yeah, it's not intensification of use, it's actually a change in the use of an existing.
Well, change in use, and yes, it, it basically is a change of use, yes. More, I mean, a lot of times it's, it is an intensification, but the bottom line is change of use, yes.
The way in which I've handled that particular um, scenario that, that's being highlighted in the code, is it's been pulled out and, and kind of retooled. Now granted, these aren't, the language and the, the wording that I have in this term sheet isn't meant to be final. It's meant to be a, a starting point and an introduction to kind of what we're looking at here. But there's been a lot of thought that I, I put into this uh, in terms of how this is addressed. And really, what it boils down to is putting a percentage onto that gross square footage. That, so for instance, you, if you have a, a use, let's use the pharmacy as an example. And that use then has something added on to it that triggers parking. Within the, within the mortar and brick of that building. What percentage of that would trigger staff level versus planning commission? Is that, is that an appropriate measure? That's a measure that I've, I've seen, I've, I've been comfortable with. Um, it provides the applicant an understanding of, of what that parameter looks like, like a development standard. I can't go higher than twenty-five feet. I have to be set back a certain distance.
Right.
Those, those are all um.
Lucas, I got a quick question. Um, so, maybe we can kind of unpack this a little bit and kind of look at where we can draw those, those guidelines as far as the buckets go, which one is a director's exemption, which goes to planning commission. So, is it safe to say that we all agree anything related to single-family residential in the single-family zone could get a director's exemption?
Single-story, single-family residential.
Single-story, yeah.
I did bring up that potential, you know, I mean, of course, we'll discuss it, but for a single family, I'm sub-screwed in fifteen percent.
Yeah.
First, I'm not saying we've adopted that, but I thought that was something we'd want, would want to consider and discuss.
I agree. Uh, uh, the other, the other exception might be, and I, um, it was something Bill Miley broke up, brought up. That um, single fam- uh, we may want to think about uh, having a threshold in terms of lot size, where, you know, for lot size over a certain amount, that would uh, have a single family, whether it's a single-story or two-story, go to the planning commission. I thought that was, that was a, a good idea to think about.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the comment was uh, more than one acre, eight, one acre.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so um.
Whether that would be the threshold or not, I mean, wherever, ten thousand, twenty thousand, one acre, you know, I thought it was a good idea for discussion.
I, I would be interested in hearing the arguments on both sides of how the size of a parcel determines who should review a project without, without specifying what the project is, even.
So, let, let's, let's, let's uh, stop for a second, and, okay, we got single family, single story. It's generally director's exemption, doesn't have to go to planning commission. Is there anything else that would be a director's exemption? Like, I mean, I know, Lucas, you have some stuff in here that's kind of commercial related, it's kind of multi-use lit, related. But just curious, is that something that um, in the past has got director's exemption? Or is that anything related to commercial, anything that's related to mixed use, anything related to multi-story, single-family? Multi-residential, that all goes to the planning commission, right?
No.
No.
So, some of that can get a director's exemption as well?
Yes, if it's minor, if it's minor, and I do have, so I think that what is minor um, needs to be talked about and clarified, because.
That, so right now, we're, we're kind of highlighting Lucas's problems and why there's so much gray area. Because uh, we, we aren't clear, where the, where, where do we go with this? Where do we go with this? What constitutes minor, what const- you know?
Right, that's the question.
You do see, uh, yeah, you do see percentage numbers in other places in the code. Um, and it might, it might be more perhaps even in, in Title Nine, building standards. But if you, if you have a loss, natural causes, or a fire, or something else that destroys more than X percent of your roof, then when you replace it, you have to put a class A roof on. And if it's less than that, and you have a class C roof, you can replace it with class C. Not, not that I'm in favor of any class C roofs in, in the city. But that's an example of drawing a bright line so that an applicant knows what the rules are. And I think that's, that's really a, a big part of, of what Lucas is searching for here, is a way to make sure that applicants know what the rules are.
Yeah, I know, I totally agree, and that, and that would be single-story residential, right?
Sure, well, that's, that's certainly part of it, and, and there, there is, beyond director's exemptions which are, which are outlined in the code, there is also the director having the ability to determine that a land use is similar to something that is in, that is allowable whether by CUP or just, or just permitted, uh, even if it's not listed anywhere in the code. And so, that's, that's a big discretionary point for the director. And the question might come up, do we want to give the director any guidance on that?
Can I bring up one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it okay, Lucas, that I say some of the common things that we come across is, say, Commissioner Trent and Commissioner Swift both live in R two zones, if they want to do a re-roof.
Right.
They, and they want to change the color, they have to have a DE. Or if they wanted to paint their front door a different color, they have to go through a DE.
Yeah.
Right now, we have a village mixed use, we have a village mixed use home wanting to add a porch at the front of their house. They're, they're going through a DE.
But going through a DE means that they've put in.
Meaning a zone clearance isn't, they can't qualify for a zone clearance. They have to go through the full director's exemption process.
And, and pay a big application fee, I suspect.
Well, it's more than the zoning clearance, yes.
So.
Zoning clearance is one twelve and DEs are four fifty plus two twenty-five per hour.
Well, that seems, that, that, that seems like a real burden on homeowners if you just want to paint your front door.
Yeah.
So, what zones are that, is that in? That's R two and VMU?
All, non-single family, meaning R three as well.
R three.
Right, R three.
But there's one on Franklin Lane that wanted to change out a window, and if they wanted to make it look different, they had to go through a DE. So there, a lot of people just redo their roofs the same color, so they don't have to go through the DE process. They can qualify for zone clearance, and um, same for.
And we get quite a few of those in a week. It's pretty common.
Where, where, where is the zone clearance process covered? Not in Article twenty, obviously.
No, it's in um, is it nineteen? Let me look here.
Oh, yes, nineteen.
Yeah, so there, it, it is very distinct and, and pretty specific in terms of the applicability. Um. And that's, that's ten two nineteen oh three. So it provides some pretty, and there are, there are no findings, this is not a discretionary um. Review, it's, it's a uh, it's ministerial, so, you need, you need the standards.
That's to do a zoning clearance, but what, what Sherry has been saying is there are a lot of things that sound kind of minor to me that are outside the zoning clearance process.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Correct.
And that throws it into a DRP process instead?
Starts at the DRP and then it works down from there. Um, any project that I ever, that I, that I start reviewing from the beginning. Um, I look at and balance its impacts versus uh, versus the long. I, I would say, so it's impacts from a use standpoint versus design um, from a DRP standpoint. So, it's balancing those two. I'm doing that on a regular basis already, but the two are already merged together in terms of how, how it's reviewed. For the two, in, in this format, in terms of the term sheet, what we're looking at, we're taking those two. Breaking the use out of the design review. The design review still has its own process. Um, and review authority and finding either at planning commission or at staff level. And the same thing is true with this site plan permit. It's handled either at planning commission or staff level.
Okay, is that, how does the site plan permit uh, differ from a zoning clearance?
It's discretionary, meaning that it requires findings. And um, it usually, it would constitute, if you're looking at how, how this is handled in the term sheet. So if we're reading the term sheet, and you're looking on page three or four. It identifies that a new site plan permit will be required for any new or modified land use in the C one, the BP, VMU, or other non-residential zone, in addition to the current requirements for a conditional use permit or a zoning clearance. So it all depends on, on what the proposal is that's coming forward. Um. Let me see if I can think of an example here.
Because we're handling conditional uses, or conditioned uses, under a process that's called design review.
Um, yes, the two would be handled seamlessly, one hand in hand.
Can, can you think of, of examples where there would be a site? Your, your site plan permit would be an ask from an applicant? But the design review would not be an ask from the same applicant?
Yes, I can think of one right now, we've already seen.
And what's that?
Ojai Valley Pharmacy. That would have been a site plan, uh, what, what am I calling it? A site plan permit. Not a design review. There's no exterior changes that were taking place. It was a, an intensification of use, as Commissioner Lottis had, had said. By intensification of use, you're looking at the parking. The parking was minor, thus not requiring additional parking, but it's a change in use. The use is being used as retail. However, the retail component is being shifted in a very small component of that which, which is now being cer- which is now serving alcohol. Alcohol has um, a higher threshold for parking, if you will. Uh, it was, we, we had gone through it and identified there was a slight change in that part.
Okay, but that change in use of an existing commercial or industrial building that requires additional parking is in Article twenty now. Are you saying your term sheet would propose pulling it out of Article twenty and putting it somewhere else instead?
It would still live in, and the idea is, within the DRP um, article, you would have the DRP, the design review permit, and you would have this site site plan or site permit requirement, site plan permit requirement. By having those two, by having those two, you're creating a, a more stream I, I would say a more streamlined process in terms of how you're handling exterior modifications versus use-related modification. There could be use cha- use changes that do nothing and have no impact to this. There could be use cha- use changes that do nothing and have no impact to designer view. And you have separate findings and justification for, for each.
And right now, there's no way to handle it except under a DRP consideration.
Correct. But and also in doing that, you're providing the, the necessary clarity as to, as to whether it is handled at planning commission level or handled at the director's level. Right now, everything is really identified as being planning commission. So you start at the planning commission, and then you, you start looking at its intensification or its impact on either the building itself or the surrounding. And then draw it down from there to, to see if it falls to the level of it being handled at director or if, if the impacts are so that it needs to be, um, reviewed by the planning commission.
Okay, so you're, you're looking perhaps for something that says if, uh, in, in a commercial or industrial building, if a change in the use occurs in more than, say, twenty percent of the square footage of the building, then it automatically goes to planning commission. And if it's less than that, then it's dress, director's discretion whether to send it to planning commission? Is it that kind of wording that you're thinking about?
That's the kind of, yeah, that's the kind of wording direction that, and looking at that. Now granted, I put fifteen percent down here as kind of a starting point for discussion. I can tease out what, what sort of examples that would, um, and sort of impacts you would see from that in terms of what fifteen percent looks like. I can tell you the, the, um, the Ojai Valley Pharmacy, that was less than, than one percent or two percent of the overall square footage of that, of that building.
And, and what difference did it make in the parking requirements?
It changed the parking by point two.
Point two of a space?
Of a space, correct. It was, it was minor, that I would consider that to be mine. So when looking at something like that, when I'm thinking about its impact on the community, it feels like a director level determination and not something the planning commission would be looking at. That is also backed up by the fact that, um, in our use chart, it identifies alcohol is permitted within that zone. So it's backed up even by, by determinations provided by council in two thousand and four.
So maybe we should be, maybe we as a commission should be thinking about what thresholds should we be looking at then in terms of a change of use and the impacts? Uh, say if it were parking, uh, just as an example, if the change in use or the intensification required one more parking space or two more parking spaces, then the commission automatically gets it. And if it's less than one or two parking spaces, then the director decides whether to send it to the commission or not. And if not, then it's a director's exemption, which still can be reviewed by the commission. Is it that, that, is that the direction you'd like to see?
Really good way of looking at it as well, because you're putting, you're putting specific parameters on it. But you can use that through a percentage, um, format as well. Uh, but I think parking is probably the easiest target to look at when you're looking at the impacts that you would see, not only just in that specific parcel, but potentially surrounding, um, that development as well.
It's, it's at least pretty well quantified. I'm not sure what other aspects of use, for example, are similar to use is, is almost the opposite of quantified.
We could have percentage of floor area. Um, I mean, I haven't looked at it carefully, but we had something come through at late this afternoon that, um.
Did that feel milder again?
No, uh, uh, director exemption. And to me, this, that, I, I, I need to think about it a little bit more, but that's, that it's potentially a project where, um, a, a floor area percentage might, might have been useful. I don't know yet. Anyway, that's just another, that's another possibility for a threshold.
Right, it helps provide that clarity.
I have a question.
Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yeah, just a question. Um, so something that might be helpful would be, and I know we've done this, uh, for other things we've discussed, is to, um, get some examples, maybe from some local communities. Some, you know, to look at it as a template, like to see what other people are doing. Cause like right now, I'm not, you know, I'd probably be pulling something out of the air.
I think we all would, yeah.
Context, just to see, you know, what triggers it in another community. And of course, we would make it our own, but it's just as a reference.
Right.
I think that would. Always good to, uh, check around and see what other people are doing, for sure.
I suspect Lucas has done some of that already, but.
I've already done some of that work, but I'll, I'll come back with some, I can come back with some additional information and clarification.
Do we want, do we want to look at, um, other, other than the single-story, single-family residences? Do we want to look at something that says the cost of a project ought to have a threshold on it? And if it's above that threshold, then the planning commission sees it automatically? And if it does not, then the, then the director has some discretion whether to push it on?
I think cost is, is somewhat difficult to, to measure.
Too, yeah.
And I, I would probably stay away from that, but parameters of code provide really good development, um, insight, I would say. And I think, I think we stay within those parameters. I think we're, we can, we can help with some solutions. Um, if you get into the cost, I feel like we're, we're falling into a mix of, of what kind of the arts commission handles in terms of their, their different types of qualifying, um, features for, for art projects. So I think that works fine for, for that component, but I don't, I don't know that it would necessarily work here in terms of what we're looking at. It just seems, it seems somewhat alienated here.
I agree with that about not including cost. Somebody could be building the exact same square footage of a home and have double the amount going into it as compared to somebody else. Same size property, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, what's your budget and how much you can do. I, I think we, I agree not to include that budget or the cost.
I think it's a fair point, but.
Yeah.
I, I, I would say I would agree with, with, uh, Commissioner Nolan that we should, we should include at least the mention of landscaping and environment when, when we are looking at an application. Uh, it might be appropriate to say that, that, um, some kind of a modified landscape plan is required for smaller projects. I don't know. That right now, I, I recall what you said, you have to have a certain large, relatively large amount of landscaping before a landscape plan is required.
Well, it's actually, they've tightened it up. It's, um, five hundred square foot for new projects, which is pretty small. And twenty-five hundred square feet for renovated projects, which isn't that big either. So a good, a lot of projects will be triggered by that.
Oh, twenty-five hundred is pretty big if you have a six thousand square foot lot.
Right, and that's for renovated projects. Five hundred for new.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's a lot of seventy-five hundred square foot lots in this town, and that would be a third of the lot.
Well, that's true.
So.
And I, I was saying it not to be onerous and not to say, oh, here's another thing. But I just feel like if we're monitoring the color of someone's roof, the color of the trim around their windows, or a certain architectural aesthetic, to me, part of the whole package is the landscape. I mean, we talk about the, the, uh, the driveway material and the grading. So it's really the whole package, um, or even, you know, what type of fence or wall they're putting in. Um, but I think it kind of boils down to what do we have in our guidelines? Do we have anything? And I guess maybe it comes back to the general plan. Is there, uh, you know, it's not that it's a cookie cutter template, because I, you know, I believe there's, um, you know, a lot of room for variety, but at the same time, aesthetically and environmentally, is there something we're trying to achieve here? Where landscape is concerned? I think there is, but that's my opinion. And I just felt it was worth.
What, what do you feel we're trying to achieve?
Well, number one, if you go into our general plan, you know, they, they, they talk about, you know, the overall aesthetic and views and, but it's very broad.
Water use, probably.
Yeah, but then now, you know, and, and maybe because we are going to be redoing, uh, updating our general plan, it's, I have a feeling there's going to be kind of a shift. And a lot of it has to do with, I mean, I can't say for sure, I'm, I'm hoping, but you know, with water use and fire, et cetera. But at the same time, and I bring this up only because I see certain styles of architecture where people have like completely, and this is on commercial, ripped out their landscape that was there probably for fifty years, and then just have like gravel and two cactus or an agave. I'm not against a cactus and agave, but now you're changing the overall aesthetic of downtown. And you're changing the environment because now you're, you know, there's less shade, they've taken things out. There could be more runoff because you're not slowing down stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why I think it's important to.
Well, maybe we're better off if we, if we try to instill the principles of M Wilo and water capture, keep it on the parcel and stuff like that, as opposed to saying this kind of landscape planting is good and that kind is bad. What do, what do you all think?
I was going to say, I, I think the people that are, that I see doing that, I'm guessing are doing it with good intention of like, oh, I'm, I'm not going to use any water in my landscape. I understand. But at the same time, there's a balance with the ecology and once again, design review, the aesthetic.
And aesthetic.
Not what we're going for. And I think they both need to be thrown into the mix.
But I, but I, my understanding is, so I, I, um, I didn't think you were suggesting changing the landscape requirements for a landscape plan because that's already being set up.
I think it's more, and maybe I'm in the wrong place and please.
I mean, if it's, so if it's landscape.
I just looked at, you know, I start looking at design review, knowing full well that on a good percent of these, we are going to be turning in landscape plans. But you know, we're talking about, you know, looking at, uh, deciding if somebody could use a certain color in their color palette because we have that in our general plan. There's a certain aesthetic. And you know, we promote a craftsman and, you know, Spanish-esque style architecture, et cetera, et cetera. Do, I don't want to be onerous, I don't want to be over limiting, but are we aesthetically and environmentally trying to do or maintain or create something in our landscape that needs to be part of that package? Because in this, we're also talking about, for example, it says like grading in your driveway and, you know, your fence or your wall, wouldn't part of the whole package be the building, course, the hardscape and the landscape? So that there's some mention of it and, and like I said, if I'm in the wrong arena here tonight, just please let me know. But it, to me, it kind of makes sense to do that.
Um, no, I, I think it's appropriate to look at those things, and certainly we have rules for doing it if the landscape area exceeds a certain, a certain amount. I, I personally did not recall seeing anything that said the planning commission is going to decide unless the, unless you get a DE, what color paint you can put on your front door. That seems kind of onerous to me. And, and maybe part of what we can do as we look at the term sheet, and because we're not going to settle anything tonight, this is, this is a discussion item. But look at the term sheet first, and let's see if we can, if we can come to some sort of consensus on the principles. Then if we can do that, we can go back into the text of Article twenty and look at that. My personal preference would be that, that we not be quite so tight on, on the appearance of things. Yes, we have a small town, we have craftsmen and Spanish revival, mission revival, those, those kinds of, of, uh, atmospheres here in town. We also have a lot that's very different. But I'd, I'd hate to be in a position, which I didn't realize we were, of telling people there's only certain colors of roof you can have on your house.
It's one of the endemic consequences of, of what we've seen here over, over the years and, and that's, that's gone back. If I was to look at a trend, that's actually been a fairly consistent trend in terms of how, how we've been handling those, those situations as they arise.
Well, I, I could see the, the city encouraging certain things like earth tones and such, but I walked through Del Oro, there's a big house on Del Oro that has a barrel tile roof that is, to my eye, bright blue. I don't know how that ever happened. It doesn't look like any other house in the city. At the same time, I'm, I'm not sure that it should be illegal to do that.
But it's not in an R two or R three or VMU zone, and it's single family, right?
Maybe, maybe that's something we need to look at as well.
I guess I would like to know more about why are we so, um, why are we monitoring so closely the R two, the R three and the VMU? I mean, is it a, is it a, uh, um, an outcome of density or, uh, you know, what? I'm not exactly sure why that, why that is.
No, I'm not either. Uh, I can, I can see, I can see the VMU because that has a commercial flavor to it.
Yeah.
Uh, but other residential zones, uh, ought to be more free-form to my way of thinking.
In terms of multifamily you're talking about versus the single family?
Single family.
I just know the background of, of why, why that's, why we, why we're at that place at this point.
Lucas hasn't been here long enough to tell us about that, but maybe somebody is.
Yeah. I, here, okay, so I, I want to pause this conversation for a moment because I'm noticing that I have Commissioner Trent and I have Commissioner Swift, and I have, Swift, at one point, you had, you had wanted to mention something. The three of, and we've got three commissioners that have been very heavy in the discussion tonight. I'm wanting to hear from, from both of you. I know you're both new, um, or newer, but you've had a chance to kind of digest this, hear the conversation tonight, um, take a look at this. I'm just kind of curious as to what your thoughts are.
Well, yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of weigh in. Um, I've been, you know, obviously the conversation is gone, kind of. Seems like we're going down rabbit holes, which is okay, uh, because it's just, you know, part of the general conversation, but I would love to kind of get to a point where we're a little more defined on what we're trying to discuss. And Lucas, I don't know if this would help, but considering this is a, a process, right, that we're looking at, I don't know if a process map would make sense as a visual that you could show people. Um, I'm looking at the city of Santa Barbara, they have, um, a flow chart that they've created around the design review process, and it has step one, application, step two, staff review, step two A, administrative staff review, and, you know, sign off on minor, uh, projects. And then they go to step three, step four, step five, and it kind of outlines the whole process for, not only for the planning commission for us, uh, but for staff, for the applicant. Um, you know, because I want to get to a place where this process is, uh, like you mentioned, streamlined, it's easy to understand. Uh, we don't have so much gray area, because obviously with all this ambiguity, it just creates frustration. It creates a lot of time loss, you know, it creates extra dollars that we have to pay out from the city to, you know, pay for extra time to, you know, have staff work on this stuff. Uh, the applicant's not happy because they're, you know, are delayed and they can't get their things done. So I think the more clarity we can build, the better. And I don't know if a visual, visual would help us because then we wouldn't go down rabbit holes so much. You know what I mean? We've got to stick.
Really good point.
Yeah, um, it's just a thought. It looks like other cities have done it. And I don't know, uh, too, it looks like, uh, City of Santa Barbara, they have a single-family design review board. Um, and then they have basically a guidelines for single-family design. So they have like a, a separate little place for just single-family. Um, and since that's kind of seems like a, a differentiating line between what qualifies for director's exemption versus what needs to go to the planning commission, I think maybe we start with that. We start with the single family. We start with the single family and then we go beyond that with other things and some of the gray area stuff and then maybe we can get into R two and you know, R three and mixed use and all that other stuff, but. I think we have to have a starting point. We have to have one thing that we all agree on.
And I think we're gonna be careful too, because I mean, we're talking about R three, but. That is such a small area of the city. I mean, it's. It's a pen. Compared to the rest of the community, so I want to make sure that we're not putting undue pressure on some of these. Uh zoning districts that. Probably have maybe half a dozen or a dozen um parcels, but. Yeah, I to to your point, Commissioner Trent, I think I've seen flow charts, I've 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 used them. And other other cities that I've been. I think I should actually a really good point. If we have one here that I'm aware of. If we did, I would be using it.
Right, and that might help, yeah.
The float the flow chart then could talk about the parameters that are considered. As you go through the process of. Right. Does it get a D E or not?
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
Um.
About Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, um. My whole list has changed. But I like it. I want to follow up with Commissioner Trent's note. A lot of my notes. I circle and say the applicant, I think it all starts with the applicant. And um educating the applicant on what do you need a permit for? Why do you need it? And have that questionnaire, have that chart, because I I'm one of the roofs that, you know, was a director's exemption. I want to put solar panels on and needed to get rid of my my clay tile roof. I didn't know it had, you know, there there might be an issue. So, you know, I got three, four bids and not one of those bids said. That a permit was required. And even an electrical contractor, I don't really know all the other. Permit requirements for other trades, so. I think educating the the public, educating the applicant before they start this process or they do something they're not supposed to do. Which then creates more work for the staff. I think that would really filter and um kind of clarify things before they even hit the permit desk. Um, and that's kind of where I wanted to start with the basics. And kind of like Commissioner Trent said, unpackaged this, but also kind of rebuild it from. The applicant applicant and um. You know. The community's point and then go and then go in, you know, will you step in the door? What do you do? Do I need a permit? And guide them through, and I think that's that's the clarity that would really help um Lucas.
Good, thank you.
Good thoughts there. Um. In in my life's professional work. We went through kind of a two two-stage process like Lucas has started tonight. With a term sheet and I was discussing this with with him the other day. As an aerospace contractor. If I wanted. To get a program. With the government. I'd have to write a proposal. We write grant proposals and that sort of thing too, so there's some similarity here. But it was always our policy, whatever company I worked in. To come up with a set of principles or themes or. Ideas around which we will eventually. Write our proposal, or in this case, around which we will eventually write. Uh, what we think should be the changes to the municipal code. And so if we could, if we're going to review something page by page, I'd like to start with reviewing the term sheet. And say, are these the concepts? That we as commissioners think need to be considered and Commissioner Nolan started with that. In the fourth bullet on page. One of attachment A, saying we should add stuff to that. But if we can go through that and then think about it till the next meeting or the one after. Then we may be in a better position to start talking about specific changes. To the wording of the code that we might recommend to city council. Could we do that?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really good idea. We're not talking about doing that tonight. We're talking about you as a commission going back and looking at this term sheet, right?
Right, but we can, we if there are things that jump out immediately to us about the term sheet. I think we ought to cover that tonight. And then we'll think about it some more and the next time we come back to this topic. Then be better prepared to talk some more details. Of the term sheet and then say to ourselves, what, how does that impact the code?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Let's be pointed pointed and and somewhat direct. With this, if there are specific. Items that you're seeing that that have been identified either as a director's review determination or a planning commission. Um, review determination or identified within the site plan permit. As bullet points. Um. Let's let's tease those out and I'll take a closer look at those um and bring them back to this for a second, a second round.
Uh, i- in my case specifically about about the land use since that's. That's something that we sort of. Inherently do as a group between staff and and commission. Um. But I'm I'm wondering. What what comes into you in an application? Um, have have the applicants in general? Gone to the land use tables and said? Yes, that's what I want to do, so I'm going to write that on the application?
Nope, that never happens. It never happens.
Is that part of the initial conversation?
Yeah, that's part of the.
Somebody comes in?
That's that's the Q and A that starts. It's usually either an email or a phone call. And that's.
You refer them to the land use tables and say. Take a look at this, this will give you a general idea. You you figure out what you want to do and where it fits in what's currently allowed or conditionally allowed. And then let's talk some more. Is it that kind of a conversation?
It could, it could be that type of conversation. A lot of times there's more handholding than that, though. Uh, we're we're explaining the the scenario, the situation to them in terms of it of their type of use. And trying to see if it fits into one of the uses that are identified with then that you start depending on the zone. Um, and that's that's the ground level. That's where it starts to it starts to build from there.
Okay. Um, and and um. Hmm. But you're still you're still looking for some guidelines that you can use and that you can give to applicants. For not so much. What happens with new construction, whether it's single family, multi families, one or two story. There there we have some rules already. But. But in terms of. That kind of new construction, there's not a lot of that that comes along. I think I think. Kathy Nolan, I think we've seen. A couple of. A couple of changes. Or redevelopment or whatever you want to might want to call it. Um. At least a couple of those, maybe more than a couple for every new construction we've seen. And so my my feeling is that that redevelopment. Or remodeling. Is probably more of a gray area for the staff right now. And maybe that's where they need more help. Figuring out. Do it yourself or give it to the commission?
I agree with that and any sort of ground up construction in terms of commercial. That's not going to be a director's exemption. That's going to be handled by planning.
Right.
Like that's 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 pretty clear. I think that's even identified within the term sheet that we're looking at here um tonight.
And what about uh what about ADUs? Is that called out?
Uh, ADUs are handled um at staff level and that is really per state law. Um. And when I mean staff level, I mean, we're looking at it from the standpoint of does it meet the development standards? Oh, it does? The zoning clearance and you move forward. Um, it's pretty straightforward. It didn't used to be that way. Uh, those those regulations.
It's a two-story A D U.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, that's a good point. The only difference would be a two-story A D U.
Or an existing home adding a two-story A D U.
Much of our, much of our um oversight over ADUs is uh preempted by state law.
Right.
We do have within the current brand use of the code. That if it is a two-story A D U, it goes before um planning commission. That's how.
Because it's two-story.
So that that could be a uh trigger in the flow chart is single. You know, a single story, right, versus two-story?
Yeah, absolutely. That that could be where it it tears off.
And if it's multifamily, it all it. It automatically goes to the commission?
Wait, say that again?
I say if it's multifamily, it automatically goes to the commission? I I did not have that impression.
Uh, well, no, hold on a second. Multifamily.
Yeah, I think that's.
In terms of an A D U, if you've got an A D U proposing in a multifamily?
No, no, just a multifamily building.
No, that goes to that goes to the commission.
Yeah, it would go to the commission. It wouldn't. Hold on here.
You've got no new non sing, new non-single-family residential development that's under the commission. Per view. And that that's that reflects current process, right?
Yeah. Um. I'm curious about two ten two, two thousand three. A three. Any construction, whether or not a building permit is required. Which affects the exterior elevation. What is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a pretty broad statement, but I think that's where your multifamily piece is coming into play. If any construction which affects the exterior elevations of any existing building or structure other than. Single-family, single-story residential dwelling, so that's.
But it.
The only thing that's specific about.
Whether or not a building permit is required, is there something?
It's basically identifying anything. That is not single-story or single-family.
Is there something where a building permit would not be required, but it does affect? The exterior elevation? We're talking about building a shed? Or what?
Well, if it's a shed, if it's less than a hundred and twenty square feet, it doesn't require a permit. Thus.
It may be subject to design review under this para- under this subsection. If it affects the exterior elevation of a building.
Right. The.
That's two thousand three A three.
Hmm.
Take another one of those rabbit holes, you guys. Yeah, maybe, maybe.
Yeah. Let's let's stay on the term sheet for for now. Uh. Is there any other comments or or questions that that would be helpful here? And in in any of the bullet points that that I've outlined here in these four pages? I've got quite a few notes here, to be quite honest, um throughout this document, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work to be done here.
Okay, I just have, I just wanted to run down a couple, I I mean, I'm look, I think I was focusing more I on. Or these comments are more on the director review. Um, so. The new single family, um, we're going to look at. Uh, maybe a threshold on lot size and also and then the fifteen percent slope or some some degree of a steeper slope.
Yeah, the the term sheet. Has fifteen-degree slopes on both sides.
Oh, yeah, see, so I would be, so yeah, I don't, I don't think. Yeah, the new single-family residential on slopes of fifteen percent, I think that should go to commission and man, that's my personal opinion. And additions on slopes of fifteen percent. I mean, I I don't I don't know, why why would, why would that be the director?
Well, the the director, oh, you're saying automatically the director has no discretion?
Well, I mean, if we're going to put a threshold in, then I would say those don't belong under the director. Correct? If there's a threshold, it gets switched out to the commission.
Or depending on what the threshold is.
Yeah, this this parameter was taken um from the Hillside Development Standards. In there, it identifies not specifically whether it requires planning commission review, but this says. Design review permits.
It depends on the threshold. But the exterior modifications needs better clarification. That's the number number four item under director. Okay? Um, and on the next, the next page, uh personally, I don't think outdoor dining. I would like to see that come to the commission. There's too many, there's too many. Implications for neighboring properties and um. It it's just, you know, an exterior, it's a it's an outdoor use. It should be reviewed by the commission. That's my feeling and also. Um, the. Okay, I admit it's a sensitive subject, but the modification of introduction beer wine is an accessory use. I would like to discuss that again further. Um, because the the ident- the. The accessory use. Uh. Terminology or application or interpretation of that phrase along with minor. What's minor use and um. Um, I think are really. Um. Something to discuss and I would like, I don't think the beer and wine thing should be, I think that should be a commission review, so we don't. We don't have to appeal some director determination.
Okay, my my feeling is we should. We should set some sort of, we should recommend some sort of. Threshold on changed use. And it doesn't matter what the change is, whether it's. Adding beer and wine or not adding beer and wine, but adding hammers and nails. Um. There ought to be, there ought to be some sort of threshold that says we should look at it. Uh, but even if if. I I don't know, is there any place right now that says? This has to go to the commission? Because there are exceptions listed in two ten two, two thousand three. But some of that stuff still gets director exemptions, right?
Right.
So, so I'm not sure, Commissioner Lottis, are you saying there should be, there should be a section in the design review permit thing? That says. These are, these are areas or. Or parameters or thresholds. Which if exceeded. The uh. This the director has no discretion.
Well, how did so? So the just as the example, the uh beer and wine thing with the pharmacy, so. That change of use was determined to be minor and that's why the director did an exemption, so that's where I personally have a problem. Um, uh particularly with the beer and wine sales, just because. Uh the because of the argument that was laid down for that project. That would allow every single retail outlet in the downtown to do exactly the same thing. And it's a matter of precedent and so. Um, I just think that that in particular is what, there might be other uses that might need. Um. A little bit more restrictive point of view or threshold on it, and that's one of them. That's all I'm saying.
So. I just wanted to kind of go back to that. Your point and also talk about. That particular situation if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what happened is it changed from a drugstore pharmacy. To convenience slash liquor store, so the use changed. Because of that use changed, there was an additional parking requirement. So it's not necessarily, I mean, the alcohol was a part of it because it changed to kind of a convenience slash liquor store. Um, so I guess my question is. Um. Do we need to call out? Beer, wine and distilled spirits and that sort of thing, or can we call out change in use? Like if the change of use is minor. Enough where it doesn't deserve to have a um, you know, the planning commission review, you know what I'm saying? So so it's. We don't call out one versus the other, you know, kind of what you mentioned, Steve, like hammers and nails and that sort of thing.
I think that's actually a really good point. Um, because right now we're putting. We're putting. Well. All three, beer, wine and distilled spirits, so alcoholic beverages into a box and I'm trying to identify where that fits into. Um, if it's a change in use that has some sort of parameter to it. I provided a percentage, I could pull, I could pull away the the whole alcohol component of it and just identify it or change in use. I provided a percentage, I could pull, I could pull away the, the whole alcohol component of it and just identify the change in use.
Right.
That affects more than a percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah, where that would be within the minor category and then anything else would be fall into a major category. Just as an example, I mean, flor shops that during the holidays when I include like alcohol. With a party that that bouquet or whatever. Or a retail use that's including some sort of alcohol beverage, you can't do that for. Standard. Those are, those are, those are examples of of, I know you're looking at it.
They don't need to come in for a, for any kind of review for that, for some kind of holiday thing. I mean, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I.
Or or if you have a.
There's outliers to that, and I'm not necessarily using those as examples for the term. Or to provide as an example, I'm just saying, look, there's other.
Yeah.
There's other things to think about out there as well.
Yeah, for example, let's say I have a general retail store. And then, you know, maybe I want to sell a little bit of groceries on the side. So then I have a little minor use where I have a little bit of it, the use changes, it doesn't fully go to a grocery store. Cause I'm only doing a little bit of it. There's a certain percentage that's grocery. You know, like, let's say Rains, Rains wants to sell. A little bit of uh, I don't know, grocery supplies or something.
Eggs and potato chips.
Eh, right, eggs and potato chips, cause there's, you know, there's an Ojai brand of potato chips that they wanna sell. You know, it might not classify them as a full grocery store where they're like, you know, Westridge or something. But it's just a minor change. You know, and that might not necessarily need to go through the planning commission.
Agreed.
Okay, well, let's, let's think about the kinds of thresholds that we would want to. That we would want to talk about if we're talking about changing use. Um. And I I don't want to get too far afield. The parking clearly was a part of the pharmacy thing. And we should take up parking sometime, but not in this discussion, I think.
Agreed. I I mean, I agree, but I I also, if there's a change of use potentially, you would, you may need more parking, so.
Oh, I, yes, if, and and yes, and if the change of use. Requires a change of parking, there should be some kind of threshold on that, too.
Okay.
Point two of a space.
Okay.
It is clearly minor. Um, by the way, there is in uh ten two. Ten two twenty five oh three, there's a whole table. Of allowable minor variances subject to the director's decision already. And and I would suggest when we come back to this discussion again. That that uh we have ten two twenty five oh three to look at. As maybe a template of something that we might use to guide in other. Either settings of thresholds. To to try to break up this, who does the, who does this and who does that? Um. Because that's, that's at least one guide to what, what constitutes a minor variance that's already in the code. And so, maybe we can, maybe we can think along those lines. And come up with some ideas of what constitutes a minor land use change. Or what constitutes a minor design change? Um.
Uh, good idea, Steve. I I didn't even uh. I hadn't really seen that, so good, yeah.
Yes, two, ten two twenty five oh three has a table. That at least. Might help guide us. In thinking about how to set stuff, but I think it would be a big help. If we could make. General rules with thresholds. That would, I think, be a big help to applicants and to the staff. Jake, what do you think?
You're on mute. Commissioner Swift, you're on mute.
Think you're muted.
I'm still learning how this whole process works, kind of.
Complicated.
Yeah, from one end to the other, so I, right, at the moment, I'm just absorbing and um. Yeah, just, just, I don't want to waste anybody's time by bringing up conversations that take us on a tangent, so. I I'm, I'm just want to absorb and learn and um be able to, to give back to you guys, you know, when I put this all together.
Okay. Um, on attachment A, page one. Existing codified reg- requirements. The last bullet, I think, is one of the keys here, does not provide examples or parameters. From planning commission review and director review. There, there is, there is a bright line, I think, right now between. What is ministerial, that is. An applicant comes in and they conform to the code, right down to the last word. That's very clear. The staff can just go deal with it. Well, don't conform down to the last word. Then we have to help staff figure out. Where is there a line or where are there some guidelines? That, that helps streamline that process.
Right, but I guess my, I'm going back to the single family. Um, or I'm sorry, single story, single family residential. It seems like if if something is in that category and it fits with on, uh, within the code. Then that's something that we shouldn't see as a planning commission, right? I mean, that's pretty clear cut, right?
That's pretty clear cut, yes.
I mean, I think everybody agrees on that one, right? Maybe that's our starting point, and then we can go off from there.
Okay.
I was gonna mention too, I also like. The, what Commissioner Trent was sharing from, I mean, he used the city of Santa Barbara as an example. But it's almost a key, like when you come in, and this also kind of ties in with what Commissioner Swift was saying. You know, if you look at it from the applicant's standpoint, although it's beneficial for all, for all parties. You come in and, you know, depending on what, where your, if it's single family, you go here. And it takes you to the director's exemption, unless you say, for example, we decided to use over the fifteen percent slope. Then there'd be an arrow, you'd go to planning commission. But just to like, to break it out. Yeah, I agree. I mean, I like doing that, too. I guess that could, I was into my old botany background, you know, of using.
Flowcharts.
Economic keys.
Flowcharts, operations research, whatever.
Yeah, but yeah, it's, is it A or is it B and uh.
Yeah, there should be some question boxes with numbers inside.
Yeah.
I think that's what, that's part of what Lucas is looking for.
Yeah, it directs you. Where to go and defines. Finds a question.
Um. Yeah, let's, let's um, let's all take these four pages or three and a half pages. To heart, look at them some more and think about, think about thresholds and parameters. And come back to discuss it some more the next time. Um. That said, have we all exhausted ourselves and the topic and Lucas? Or? Do we want to do some more? Go ahead, Kathy.
I just wanted to to reiterate, if possible, if 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 we're gonna pick this up at our next uh planning commission meeting or whenever it's going to be. It would be great to have some um examples or samples from. Other municipalities, you know, locally that uh we could just take a look at.
Yeah, maybe.
In in other words, if they may have the thresholds they've already done, it'd be like, oh, okay, yeah, here's a good example. I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So we'll front load your hours on this, Lucas.
Well, we might make some good discoveries by looking at.
Yes, yes.
I'm looking forward to it.
We don't have to necessarily recreate. You know, the whole thing. Right. Good time out there. To borrow from.
All right, well, let's uh, let's take that as, let's take that as homework to be thinking about. And. Move to our next agenda item then, future agenda items. Lucas, what do you have to say here?
Um, we probably should.
We don't have a list of uh director's exemptions this week, although I did see an email today.
Right, there's an email that went out today. There, I think the list comes out once a month, so we'll actually have. Uh, the list for the next, the next meeting, which is.
For December second, okay?
Yeah, we'll have that list again for all the directors determinations.
Okay.
Not just the director's exemption. Just so you know, December second, we'll be having another meeting and we'll be discussing this again. I. I fully anticipate having this on, on the agenda again, so you should be looking for that. Uh, I'll be taking that feedback. That all, all the commissioners have provided, so that was, that was good feedback tonight. Um. We may not put on the title ten errata and other just other revisions. Simply because. What we're doing right now is, it's a lot of, there's a lot of thinking going on, there's a lot of, a lot of thinking going on here right now, so I, I don't want to take. Away that thought process in terms of the, the work we're doing with this term sheet. And then break it up with the errata and getting lost potentially in some of that. So. And then December sixteenth, we're looking at um the public hearing for the two oh four, two oh six Canyada Street. The lot merger, um, and they're doing an addition to the RCK um studios. So you'll.
Is this, is this the little hobbit house in the lot next door?
Yeah, they'll have to demo that, that smaller, that smaller kind of.
Yeah, okay, we saw that Kathy once before. Kathy and Kathy, they wanted to put a circle drive in and.
Yeah, it was before I was here, but yeah, that's how long ago it was. So they're getting, they're getting their ducks in a row here. Maybe you should be seeing that on the sixteenth.
Okay, and as far as the general plan update, there was discussion, I, just briefly, I think, at the last. Planning commission meeting about Iranian associates interviewing us.
Yeah.
Bonk.
Right, so I.
Is there a plan for that yet?
Yeah, so I'm, I've sent out inquiries regarding that. Um, it's not, it's to the chairs and vice chairs of all the commissions. So we're trying to to work through that. Is that what you're talking about? I want to make sure that I'm.
Scheduling some, some direct contact between the commissioners. And the consultants, yes.
Yeah, it'll be a Q and A. Absolutely. So I'm narrowing down dates for that.
We'll have a meeting like this, but at a date to be determined.
Correct.
Okay.
Date and time to be TV, to be determined.
Any other questions of staff on, on future items? Then let us hear from our.
One, one thing before, before uh Councilman Haney speaks. Um, tonight, uh, this afternoon, I sent off a director's exemption uh approval. Uh, if any of the commissioners has any questions on that, I mean, anytime that that email goes out, it's. Questions that could come from commissioners or council. Um, but I just wanted to let you guys know that if you have any questions on it, you're more than welcome to give me a call or shoot me an email. That's it.
I I saw it, but I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, the ink's still drying.
Two oh three oh seven Bryant Street.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Um. Mr. Haney?
So I just, um, I wrote a couple of things down just um to keep us. Um. In line with the fact that we're in Ojai. So whenever I hear the term or I hear the word Santa Barbara. Or Los Angeles. Or Orange County. Or anything bigger, greater, and larger than this small, unique community, it scares the crap out of me. So I'm just telling you guys that. It's really interesting. Everything that you read and everything that we print in the guidelines about community development. The first word that pops out is the word uniqueness. So it's important that we don't lose sight of that. The second thing is, when we're looking at planning and we're looking at um. Construction fees. I think cost. And who's, who's gonna bear that cost? Whether it's the applicant or it's staff. But I think that has to pay, that has to be kept in mind when you're making decisions. Um. The, the biggest uh thing I wrote down here is Big Brother creep. You guys could. Probably ascertain what that means, but to me. It's us starting to tell everyone what they can or cannot do, when they can do it, why they can do it, where they can do it. Um, because that also disturbs the uniqueness of this community. Um, there is not one kind of building here. There is so many different varieties. There is not one kind of landscaping here. There is not one type of fencing here. Um, we are unique and and that, and that defines us. And that also, you know, obviously builds our character, and it also creates a ton of questions and debate. So I just, I'm, I just, let's not lose sight of that, that we're unique, we're not like anything else. Um. Our job is not to create barriers, but to remove them. Our job is to, everything in, in, and to me, everything and anything we do is, you need to ask yourself why. Are we looking for a problem that needs a solution? Or do we have a, or do we have a solution looking for a problem? Is that the correct phraseology of that? But you guys get the drift. Um, we gotta be clear on that, you know, if it's not broken, why fix it? If it needs fixing, you need to ask yourself why, and you really need to have that deep discussion about it. Um. Regarding alcohol. And tobacco and cannabis, because that's all now into the forefront of community, I think we need to be careful about. How we want to do carve outs using those definite terms. I think, I think if we're gonna change the use, I like the direction of the conversation in the second half. Was about not necessarily the use, but does it change the use of the site and what's going on within that building? Um. I'll use, for instance, I think the uh. Was it an icebox that was imported into the drugstore to sell alcohol?
The cooler.
Was it a whole wall of coolers?
It's about four or five feet worth of cooler.
Yeah, did it change the, you know, the, the, the whole definition? Cause when I heard that conversation, I said. So if I had a liquor store and I wanted to sell drugs or become a pharmacy, is that a change of use?
Yeah.
That's the question to me that we ask ourselves when we start looking at how we're gonna define things. Is what's the opposite of what we're looking at? And I would say if, if, uh, if a liquor store wanted to be a pharmacy. And just wanted to put up a small section of some type of drugs, I, I could be wrong in this, whatever we want to. Call them. Um. You know. That's um, that's a defining moment as to the character of what that business is. So I think that that's a, I think that's a worthwhile discussion. I don't know if that discussion needs to go to planning or if that's something that the um. Planning director and the city attorney and the city manager can determine as to where that should go. So, um, I just want us to be careful on that. Again, Big Brother creep, I think, is, is scares the daylights out of me if we start inserting ourselves into every aspect of everyone's life. And what by doing so, we remove the uniqueness of Ojai. Um, I even question the fact that someone has to come in. And get a permit to change the color of their roof. I'm just, I'm, I've always shocked on that, or the color of my house, or the color of my front door. Um. I've just always questioned why. Why do we need that? But that's just.
I, I, yeah, I think you can, you can walk around this town and see that historically. Ojai as a community has been very tolerant of outliers in a number of aspects. Not just roof color, not just front door color, uh, but lots of things.
Oh, yeah.
And.
By the way, by the way, I did work on that house um with the blue roof.
Oh, the one on Del Oro?
Yes. And I'll tell you what, um, that was imported. And really, really expensive, really, really one of a kind. Really high-end building material there, so, and lovely people. All right, you guys, thank you for letting me listen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other comments by commissioners? Seeing none. I say at. Eight, ten P M.